Mr. President.
Here. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Councilmember Ben Gray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your Lord, as we move forward through the process of doing our business today, recognize that we just had our latest homicide about an hour or so ago. We pray that you keep that family in your prayers, keep that family safe, and it is through your will and your divine guidance that we will hopefully silence the guns, continue to cause problems within our city, and allow this council to continue to move forward in a progressive way. Amen.
City Clerk's certified publication, daily record on November 5th, November 1st, regular City Council meeting, November 9th, 2010. A current copy of the Meetings Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
If you have a cellphone or pager, we ask that you turn it off or to vibrate, please, Mr. Clerk.
We're going to read up item number five. It's on here to be laid over, but they're requesting withdrawal. Five is a resolution, special use permit application submitted by AT&amp;T for a broadcast tower at 5118 Hartman Avenue. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend denial, and B is a request to allow We need a motion to allow withdrawal.
Motion to allow withdrawal.
Lights, roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan. Mr. President.
Yes.
Is withdrawn, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7E, Agenda Items Number Six through Eight shall be laid over, two weeks for publication and public hearing. Liquor, Item Number Seven, or Item Number Nine, we'll take Nine and Ten together, they're both Bag &amp; Save. Nine is Bag &amp; Save at 2650 North 90th Street. New application, new location, they're upgrading to a Class C liquor license. And Ten is the same applicant at 15370 Weir Street, they're upgrading to a Class C liquor license as well.
Will we carry on? Items Nine and Ten begin now, or are there any proponents?
Hi there, I'm proponent. My name is Brian Hare, and I'm here on behalf of Bag &amp; Save. Out of respect for the council's time, I'll keep my comments to a minimum. We, in addition, if, bust it if possible, is it, I'm sorry, Mr., it's not possible, never mind.
Mr. Attorney.
Sorry, excuse me. We're here representing Bag &amp; Save, who's looking to expand their two stores on 156th and Weir and 90th and Maple to allow for sampling of spirits consistent with what is allowed by the national chains such as Baker's, Baker's Kroger, and Hy-Vee in the same metropolitan, in the region of these stores. It's been brought to our attention that there is some concern with regards to, and understandably so, the free distribution of spirits in a grocery store. Bag &amp; Save takes these concerns seriously. They intend to have and will have at every sampling location one employee whose pure job will be to check the IDs of those who look to be questionable, to make sure that only one sample is distributed, and also to confirm that person is in a state to appreciate what they're tasting. Once the person decides to make a purchase, the purchase will be not, will not be made at that location, but instead will be taken to the cashiers. The Bag &amp; Save cashiers are well-trained with regards to identifying underage drinkers, and they intend to, and will continue to do that with alcohol that's sold pursuant to sampling. Bag &amp; Save is a locally-owned grocery store who has been a good citizen, takes drinking and driving seriously, has in the past been a major donor to MADD, and is appreciative of the council's time and would like to make a motion to have liquor license approved. Any questions?
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan. Mr. President.
Yes.
They're approved, seven to zero. Item number 11, Harry &amp; David, 17151 Davenport Street, Suite 119, new application, new location, a Class C liquor license.
Public hearing on item number 11 begins now, or are there any proponents?
Thank you. Christopher Heinrich at the law firm Harding &amp; Schultz, 121 South 13th Street, Suite 800 Lincoln, Nebraska, 68508. On behalf of Harry &amp; David Inc. and the manager applicant, this is an application for on and off sale, on and off sale liquor license. The on-sale portion is again just for free sampling purposes. They have seven employees who will be closely managed with respect to the sampling. Our manager is in the process of taking the required courses right now for training. We'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Second. Roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan. Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero. Item number 12, Bag &amp; Save at 1826 Vinton Street, new application, new location, they're upgrading to a package liquor license.
Public hearing on item number 12 begins now, or are there any proponents?
Brian Hare, on behalf of Bag &amp; Save, this is a, this Bag &amp; Save is located on 17th and Vinton. It's a central part of the, of the community down in South Omaha, and as the downtown community continues to grow, this store is becoming important as a low-cost alternative for our downtown residents. They have, in the last couple of years, expanded and made dramatic improvements to this store. They're looking to continue those improvements by expanding their now-current beer license to also include a liquor license, they intend to, a liquor and wine license. They intend to continue the same discipline they have exhibited in the past with regards to controlling underage drinking and making sure that there are no inebriated purchasers.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Second. Roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan. Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, seven to zero. Item number 13, Tobacco &amp; Phones for Less, 333 South 72nd Street, new application, new location, it's a package liquor license.
Public hearing on item number 13 begins now, or are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. John Masamiyev, 8006 South 30th Avenue, Bellevue, Nebraska. I'm here on behalf of TFL Inc. to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Second. Roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan. Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero. Item number 14, Broadmoor Market, 8722 Pacific Street, request permission to appoint Christopher Johnson manager.
Public hearing on item number 14 begins now, or are there any proponents?
Members of the council, Michael Leon, 7132 Pacific. I'm here with Chris Johnson, who is applying to be the manager. He has a long history of working in grocery store and liquor environments. He has previously taken the courses. I believe this is a good situation. If you have any questions of him or me, we're prepared to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mrs. Stothard.
Thank you. Is Chris Johnson here?
Yes.
Could you come forward? Identify yourself, please.
I'm Chris Johnson, manager of the Broadmoor Market.
And your address?
What now, oh, 4702 South 153rd Court.
Okay, Chris, I just have to ask you, you have some citations on the criminal history report that concern me. You know, as a liquor manager, you're there to make sure all the rules and regulations of the law are kept, and it concerns me that you have violated the law yourself. So, how can you guarantee us that you will be a conscientious liquor manager?
Well, there's only four people that are, can bring up liquor. We've got the books to check IDs and stuff like that. I've been through all the classes with, like, previously with Hy-Vee and before with the Broadmoor Market. So, this is where it's like my past discretion's like that, it changed. I'm not really into that stuff anymore, partying or anything like that, so.
All right. Thank you.
Roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, oh, no motion, we need a motion.
Who's the approval? Thought we had one, so, moving right along. Roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan. Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the City Council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from consent agenda shall be taken up by City Council immediately following the consent agenda in order which they remove unless otherwise provided by City Council Rules of Order.
Public hearings on Agenda Items Number 15 through 19 were held on November 2nd. Second, roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan. Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all passed, seven to zero.
Public hearings on Agenda Items Number 20 through 41 begin now. Are there any proponents on Agenda Items 20 through 41? Any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan. Mr. President.
Yes.
We'll bring up item number 65, which is on the supplemental agenda, it's a resolution. It's a resolution that the funding of the addendum to an agreement between dot-com and Principal Decision Systems for tele-staff, which is a scheduling workforce management application specializing in law enforcement, fire, and corrections organizations hereby
Public hearing on item number 65 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, I'd just like to applaud the Police Department for taking the lead and initiative to find grant funding to acquire software that'll make vast improvements and efficiencies in overtime management, which will reduce the cost to taxpayers. And hopefully, upon installation and implementation of this, the license from the software manufacturer can be expanded to, be adapted to the Fire Department and clean up that division. It's important to note that one of the things that the auditor said that he was most interested in would be documentation and records that would preserve how employee time is logged, and this system has that capability, and so I'd make a motion that we approve this.
We have a motion and a second?
Yes, sir.
No further lights, roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan. Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7A, do no meeting being held November 16th, the third reading on Agenda Items 42 through 44 shall be held on November 23rd. The public hearing on these items are today. Item Number 42, ordinance approving an amendment to the professional management and engineering contract with CH-2M Hill for the combined sewer overflow program.
Public hearing on item Number 42 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Marty Gray, Public Works Department. I'm here to field any questions you have on this item.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing closed. Correction, Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rather than ask any questions and take time with the council today, if we could continue the public hearing to next week, if I can indulge my council members, their next, next meeting, because there are a couple of folks that won't be able to make it this week but want to be here, and I just want them to hear some of the dialogue that goes on. I don't plan on it being extensive or anything like that, but you know the concerns, and so we want to address them publicly and get it out of the way so that, you know, hopefully the fear factor that, that exists right now will, will be addressed finally, and we can move ahead and, and, you know, really put some people to work. So, if my colleagues don't mind, and if you and the, and the representative from CH-2M Hill would be here next week to answer any--
Two weeks.
Two weeks, I'm sorry. We, at that point, we can, you know, finish it off then, okay?
Perfectly fine.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Does it continue the public hearing till third reading on November 23rd?
Roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan. Mr. President.
Yes.
Seven to zero, it's continued. Item 43, ordinance to prove it, two space, airspace lease agreements between the city and Nebraska Department of Roads for leasing of certain parking lots beneath Interstate 480 located adjacent to the Civic Auditorium and Hilton Hotels.
Public hearing on item Number 43 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Next item.
Item 44, ordinance to renew contract with Medical Enterprises Incorporated for drug and alcohol testing of city employees.
Public hearing on item Number 44 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 7A, the third reading, public hearing on Agenda Item 45 shall be held on November 23rd. Resolutions, item Number 46, resolution that the legislative package at City Omaha for the first legislative session of the 102nd Legislature of the State of Nebraska shall include support for legislation if introduced to reform the Commission on Industrial Relations and its practices.
Public hearing on item Number 46 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 47, resolution that the legislative package shall include a proposal to amend the state constitution to divide fines, fees, and license money generated from prosecution of local moving violations between schools and local law enforcement agencies.
Public hearing on item Number 47 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mrs. Stothard.
Thank you. I just wanted to express a concern I have. The, the school districts are going to have a large cut to their budget as promised for the, in 2011, and, you know, their only other option is to raise property taxes in response. And I am really concerned with taking money that they have been receiving and depending on away from the school districts. Millard Public Schools alone, this would amount to 1.56 million a year. So, I, I have a concern about splitting that amount of money because of those issues, because of the, the problems that the school districts are going to have to deal with anyway in the upcoming years. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gray?
Yeah, I think I'm a little, if my mic could come on, I think I'm a little confused. I thought this was the one where we added, added the 35%. Is that, this is not the one? Okay. Thank you, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
We need a motion.
No further lights. We have a motion. Things gonna go down in flames, huh?
Not adopt the resolution.
Roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan. Mr. President, the resolution is not adopted on a 6-1 vote. Item 48, resolution slash a package shall include a proposal to amend existing statutes to repeal the provisions of vehicle pursuit law imposing strict liability on political subdivisions and impose a negligent standard.
Public hearing on item Number 48 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. I, I will say that since 2002, we've been trying to work with the legislature in regards to removing the portion of state statute, imposing liability on political subdivisions and, and third-party responsibility. And this is my continued pursuit of that, excuse the pun. We have a motion?
This is sponsored by you, sir.
Yes. I move the approval. Second. No further lights, roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan. Mr. President.
Yes.
Fails on a 2 to 5 vote. Item Number 49, resolution that the legislative package shall include support for legislation if introduced to revise a crime of defacing property with graffiti and to provide for enhanced penalties.
Public hearing on item Number 49 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan. Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero. Item Number 50, resolution that the legislative package shall include support for legislation if introduced to enhance the penalty for second offense, driving under the influence and for providing, for provisions of alcohol to, and provision of alcohol to minors.
Public hearing on item Number 50 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Marty Conboy, City Prosecutor, here to urge you to adopt this measure. I thank Councilman Stothard and this council for bringing this issue forward. I can tell you that there will be legislation proposed this year to address enhanced penalties and other sanctions for drunk drivers, particularly repeat offenders. Second offenders are going to be addressed in a couple of ways, including looking at the fact that we forgive the first offense after a period of time. Not every state does, and that's the only crime in our law that has that kind of privilege, whether that's a wise thing. But I've spoken with the Attorney General and also with a number of senators. There certainly will be legislation introduced this year. As always, it's an important issue to the legislature, and of course, there are often bills which are counterproductive, and with the adoption of this resolution, not only this particular crime, but also providing alcohol to minors. I have two cases on my desk right now where fatalities resulted from people providing alcohol to minors allegedly. So, it's a serious crime, and the legislature, I think, is also going to address that issue. And with this resolution, we can join them in supporting this very important legislation.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Good afternoon, Deputy Chief Todd Schmatter, Omaha Police Department, 505 South 15th Street. On behalf of the Omaha Police Department, I'm here in support of this legislative package. The first part addresses the second offense DUI enhancement. We've seen this year through some high-profile traffic fatalities, the effects DUI can cause in this community. Last year, the Omaha Police Department alone arrested over 3,500 DUI offenders. Many of these were second offender, second, repeat offenders, if you will. If the second offense enhancement can reduce that recidivism at all, we are certainly in support of it, and we support this concept. The second part of this is the enhancement of a penalty when you sell alcohol to minors. We are aggressive as an Omaha Police Department, both proactively and reactively to this crime, yet it still continues to happen. Therefore, any enhancement on that front, we are in favor of. I am available for any questions or anything of, anything in need of the council.
Thank you. Next proponent? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, Mr. Conboy.
Marty Conboy, City Prosecutor.
I suspect these will pass seven to zero, but I had to just have a couple of questions. On the, I don't have questions on the portion of the resolution that deals with the sales to minors, but the question with regard to calling for enhanced penalties on second offense, am I picking up, because it wasn't spelled out in the resolution, what, what enhancements that you were referencing, and I, so I was looking up the lawyers, Nebraska Lawyers Handy Desk Reference Cheat Sheet to what the penalties are, and saw that they range from a first offense, excuse me, second offense, where you'd get probation, from either 10 days in jail or 240 hours of community service, $500 fine, one-year loss of license, to a potential penalty if your blood alcohol's over 0.15 of three to, three months to one year in jail, $1,000 fine, and up to 15-year license revocation. So, what sort of enhancements were you thinking? Is it if there's injury involved, or what?
Well, first of all, I will tell you, I drafted that sheet, and it doesn't include everything. For instance, for a second offense, you can do community service to avoid the jail. You can get out of the suspension in some cases by getting a work permit, frustrating the court's use of interlock, which is something that MADD has really tried to get states to adopt. And as a result, an awful lot of offenders aren't either getting the interlock or getting the permit from the state, and this, there's been a discussion of trying to close that loophole and make that interlock mandatory for that entire period. There's, as I mentioned, the look-back period for prior convictions is also something that they're, they're talking about. There are a number of other things that aren't necessarily germane to those penalties. Those are just, I guess, the, kind of the minimum by, it's a class W misdemeanor, so that's what's enumerated, but there's a, a host of other statutes that bear on the sanctions that a repeat offender might face. And also looking at the, at the possibility in the future of looking at people with severe alcohol problems, and I've had everything from the suggestion that the substitute treatment for incarceration, which would save the taxpayers money and might be more effective, or even making that part of a, what's called a DUI court, which has shown some success for offenders in other jurisdictions. So, there's a variety of concerns beyond just those penalties. I think, and I've said this publicly, I think we have a really good and tough set of laws in Nebraska. This council and the legislature have both been very supportive of, of efforts to try and tighten up our laws. But as you know, looking at the DUI laws, there's just page after page of, of kind of, you know, almost confusing things having to do with licensing and so forth. So, I know a lot of those will be on the table, along with some others, having to do with administrative license revocation and some of the other sanctions. So, it's complex. I wouldn't be surprised if there's a, a large number of bills introduced.
Well, I mean, I, the current structure has this class W misdemeanor versus class one misdemeanor structure, probation versus non-probation, what the potential penalties would be, and I was wondering if in some respects that gives you the prosecutorial discretion that you need and the flexibility you need to really address the, all the different types of situations that can come into your office. For example, in, in all these cases, there's no excuse for it, but say, for example, someone who hasn't had a, their first offense was 11 years ago, and they, pulling into their driveway, they hit their mailbox, and police come and smell alcohol. Have you been drinking? Yes. And then there's a second offense issued, which depending upon the blood alcohol content may or may not be punishable by up to a year in jail, or down to 240 hours of community service plus the fine and loss of license.
Right.
Whereas a situation where somebody's driving along the roadway and is in that blood alcohol content over the limit, it's a second offense, and they cross the center line, and, you know, God forbid, someone gets hurt or killed. Right now, the structure of the second offense, despite your other potential charges you could have for the manslaughter or of something else, to me, it doesn't seem like you have the flexibility that they're both lumped into the same.
Well, the results, I guess, you know, obviously, as you point out, if somebody's killed or injured, there might be other penalties, but it, it really is a philosophical struggle to argue whether the good fortune of making it home in one piece, as opposed to those who, whether it's just blind luck or bad luck, run into a pole or somebody else, we punish them all the same. And there is no flexibility in the minimum set of penalties. You'll notice though in all those penalties on that sheet, that those minimums have a maximum, and in that range, perhaps, that's where the court's hands are tied with those minimums. Our state has not considered and does not have a law which requires the prosecutor to forego plea bargaining, and some states have done that. We do allow prosecutors the discretion to set the level for second or third, whether it's aggravated or not, to advocate for probation or treatment, and we do get involved here in Omaha with those kind of recommendations when they're appropriate. We don't reduce very many charges, but we do look at the circumstances of every case, and we are not bound legally by any legislation to take a position, as you pointed out, you know, where, you know, the flexibility in the statute doesn't exist, it's up to the prosecutors to exercise that.
So, could one of the potential-- So could one of the potential enhancements be second offense DUI enhancements, injury versus non-injury, not only by the level, you know, currently, there's an enhancement within second offense for the level of alcohol in your blood. But I'm wondering if there could be an enhancement for second offense resulting in accident with injury or something like that.
Actually, there is, just recently, a bill passed that Matt's Law, moralizing the death of Matt Schmel, who was killed up in Benson by a drunk driver, and now actually just went into effect new penalties for people who seriously injure or kill somebody while they're drunk. That's been helpful, and that is a new step. To be truthful, even though it's not listed, I'm trying to find somebody to make it an enhanceable offense to have a child in the car while you're driving under the influence. That's something that I think would be a valid enhancement. But those enhancements, as you point out, tie the court's hands. They say, here is the minimum penalty that you have to impose on those cases, and the idea being, hopefully, the word will get out, that people will make a decision before they drive. You know, that's the whole, that's the end of all these penalties. We can make the penalties as tough as you want, but once you've arrested somebody, you've kind of lost the battle with that person. So hopefully, we can see a continued reduction. The good news is, in Omaha, as well as the state, we have seen a steady reduction in the number of fatalities per mile driven and the total number of fatalities related to alcohol. So some hope, and hopefully, we can keep the progress going.
What are you seeing in terms of number of second offense charges?
I can get you the exact number, because we handle all those in my office. And of the approximately thirty-five hundred that were filed last year, I think there were about eight or nine hundred were second offenders. And of those, we were able to charge most of them, and obviously, each case is different, and we look how old the prior is, whether it's valid, there's some issues with the propriety of the records of the court and things like that, and whether they have an attorney. But we see a fairly healthy number of that. I think it's consistent with what we see all over the country.
So over twenty percent of the DUI charges are second offense?
That's my estimate, based on the past. I can get you some exact numbers.
Okay, well, I support what you're trying to do here. I just was curious if there was something more specific or concrete in terms of where you were going on the enhancements, but thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Stothard?
Yes, thank you. Just a comment or two, and I think this is particularly important, it's always been important, but particularly important in view of the recent string of alcohol-related deaths in Omaha where innocent people are being killed by drunk drivers. And this, the whole intent of this is to help prevent more tragedies. When we talk about stiffer penalties for those that are providing alcohol to minors, currently, right now, the, it's a misdemeanor and punishable for up to a year in jail, a thousand-dollar fine, but there's no differentiation or no opportunity to enhance the penalty in cases that involve serious injury or death. And so I think that we have to increase the accountability in adults, and I think this provision is long overdue in Nebraska. And again, with those recent accidents that we have seen, that innocent people were killed by drunk drivers, and both of those on second offenses or more than that, I think it's particularly important at this time. So I ask for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
We need a motion.
We have a motion in the second yet?
Oh, did he? Okay.
Second. No further lights, roll call.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number fifty-one. Resolution that the legislative package shall include support for legislation if introduced to decrease the length of time between Keno games.
Public hearing on item number fifty-one begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item fifty-two. Resolution that the legislative package shall include a resolution for an interim study on the feasibility of obtaining grant funding for environmental, from the Environmental Trust Fund to convert a city of the metropolitan class's street lighting system to an LED system.
Public hearing on item number fifty-two begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number fifty-three. Resolution that the legislative package shall include support for legislation if introduced to modify the State Highway Trust Fund and Highway Allocation Fund relating to financing of street and roads in Nebraska and restore lost funding to local governments.
Public hearing on item number fifty-three begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mrs. Stothard?
Thank you. On this one, I just wanted to say that I'm okay and I support if we're, our aim is to make this formula more predictable and more stable so we can budget. When the change was made to rely on the wholesale price of gas, the city was in favor of this and, because the price of gas was going up. And now that it is, has gone down, we receive less money than we thought. And so, again, I'm okay if our goal is to make it more predictable, but it does concern me that, you know, we can't go asking for things to change when it doesn't quite go our way, because we did support this in the beginning. I know that this formula is very, very complex, and I also realize that the state is in, trying to cut about 1.4 billion out of the budget this year, and there's a definite lack in highway funds statewide. So I know that the road funding in the state is going to be a difficult task this year, again. But I think that if there is an attempt to revise this formula and somehow make it more stable, predictable, then I'll support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Yes. I too will support this, but I don't want to seem like we're waving, pointing a finger or lecturing to the unit camera. It's partially our fault. We were the ones that went down and asked them to change it, and then when we changed it, then it was to our detriment. So I'm supporting it, but I'm supporting it so that we can get things fixed, not because I'm trying to blame Lincoln for not doing their part. So my yes vote is to try to get things fixed.
Thank you. We have a motion? Roll call.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item fifty-four. Resolution that the legislative package shall include support for legislation if introduced to give cities more flexibility in preparing for and budgeting for LB-775 refunds.
Public hearing on item number fifty-four begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item fifty-five. Resolution that the legislative package shall include support for legislation if introduced to give cities of metropolitan class more tools for economic development.
Public hearing on item number fifty-five begins now. Are there any proponents?
City Council, my name is Rick Cunningham. I'm the Planning Director, City of Omaha. As you may or may not know, the Planning Department is heavily engaged in economic development for the city, and we are strongly in favor of going to the legislature and getting some, obtaining some new tools to have in our toolbox for economic development, not only for the city of Omaha ever. So I know we discussed earlier today that it might be advantageous to take out the cities of metropolitan class and just have this, these tools that would be available to all cities, counties, and the state of Nebraska. The tools that we're proposing are suggesting could be used by any city or any county as appropriate. I would like to paint you a picture of why we would like to have additional tools in the toolbox. I consider myself to be a handy man. I like to work with my hands, build things. And one of the things that my father tried to teach me, and I don't necessarily purport that I learned it until I started doing things, building things with my own hands, was that the right tool makes the job a lot easier. Right now, for the most, we have one effective tool for economic development here in the city of Omaha, and that's TIF. And we use it, and it's a good tool. But if we had more tools in our toolbox, we could perhaps have the right tools for the right proposal, the right incentive needed for projects. We'd also like to be able to use tools in areas that may not be blighted and substandard according to the state designations. Let me just kind of go down the list. As far as TIF, we do support some adjustments to how TIF is applied. We would like the state to look at extending the period for payback to not necessarily definitively at fifteen or twenty years or twenty-five, but to be given the option based upon the project, based on the size and parameters of the project, to be able to look at increments greater than the fifteen years. To perhaps look at what are defined as TIF-eligible expenses, to include a more broad definition of the expenses that could be included in that definition, and to define or redefine when the clock starts on the TIF. Right now, it starts when the, let's see, when the plan is, when the redevelopment plan is approved. We think that it would be better to start the clock when the agreement is approved. We have found now on a number of projects where the plan has been approved for a number of years, but because of the economy and financing, the projects were not being, were not able to start for two, three years later, but the clock has already started. And that, as you can imagine, that decreases the amount of benefits you can get from the TIF. We would also like to, for the state, to look at other tools that are presently being used in other states, effectively used for economic development. These might include the flexibility to use TIF in areas that are not blighted and substandard. So the ability to use tax increment financing elsewhere. Well, redevelopment is still something that we would like to encourage, repurposing and otherwise, so we still use TIF in those areas right now. Sometimes it's tough to use TIF when you can't justify it from blighted and substandard area. We would like, perhaps, to look at a TIF district, being able to have a district where we would, where we would capture the incremental tax increases for the whole district and have a clock established for that district. The value there is cities such as Chicago does this for a, on a district basis, and they use that district TIF to fund special-purpose types of programs, like small-business TIF programs, where they would actually award grants to small businesses, or a focused TIF program for like laboratories, high-tech laboratories or call centers that a city or otherwise would want to target in an area. We've also been approached by an urban retrofitter, rehabilitator, who would like us to use a TIF district around some of his projects in order then to incentivize renovation and raising the quality of houses around his projects. Makes sense to then have a home retrofit or home rehabilitation program funded by the whole district. Some other tools that we would like to have looked at is perhaps a sales-tax increment financing tool. And this tool would be very similar to the TIF in that it would not be an additional percentage of sales tax added to the local option, but a capture the incremental increase in sales tax created by a project or a district. Very similar to TIF, but perhaps they could be added to TIF or other tools to get a very robust program. Some other things could be a limited-purpose SID. This came before the legislature last year. It did not make it out of committee. We would like to actually, to expand that, to have it work in both directions. The original legislation only dealt with SID that would be coming into the city through annexation, and so would be designated as a special-purpose SID for allowing that SID, now part of the city, to still have a special assessment for certain types of expenses. Notably, some SIDs have roads that would not come in as public roads. They would still be maintained as private roads in, say, a homeowners association. Perhaps, and the reason they wouldn't come in is because they're subcity standard as far as a roadway, so we would not take them to maintain them. They still need to be maintained, and so in a special-purpose SID, they could levy a special assessment to maintain those roads. We would like to have the legislature look at a special-purpose SID for the other direction, where we have a significant area of the city in need of incentive and assistance in redevelopment, repurposing of a large chunk or tract of land, where we could basically provide a number of tools, use tax increment financing, use special assessments, perhaps use a sales-tax increment financing as appropriate to look at that type of redevelopment. Another one would be a public improvement fee that is somewhat similar but applied to a project, so it is tacked on as a fee, a user fee, within a district to pay for public improvements. Again, all of these suggestions, and there are others, are currently being used by other states and other cities very successfully, and we just put those on the tables to create other tools that we would have the right tool at the right time for the right job. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Willie Barney, 12333 Cummings Street, also the Empowerment Network, 2221 North 24th Street. I just stand in support of what's been discussed by Planning Director, Mr. Cunningham, with the redevelopment efforts that we're looking at in North Omaha and other parts of the city. It's incredibly encouraging to see that there are some other states and cities that are looking at innovative ways to target development. We've just gone through a nine-month process of redevelopment, casting a vision in North Omaha for redevelopment. I think some of the tools that have been outlined, as well as some other tools that may be out there, we want to look at anything possible for redevelopment. We all know that the unemployment level, the housing stock that's there, the vacant lots, not only in North Omaha but other parts of the city, we're hopeful that some of these tools will be extremely beneficial, and some of the redevelopment efforts targeted at these areas that have been in high distress. So we just stand in support of that.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. I agree with all that's been said by the Planning Director, and we had this conversation in Planning Committee just this morning. This item is written very generally to support a number of different things, but I think it's one of the most important ones we're talking about here today, because it is about economic development and jobs. I don't want to lose sight of that. And it can help all of our efforts that we're working on, whether it's North Omaha, South Omaha, Benson, Florence, Dundee, Old Millard, all these, all these places could benefit from these type of tools, and especially in this environment. And as Mr. Cunningham noted, TIF has really been our only tool in the past to do these things, and while we've used it pretty effectively, I think it's time to look at different ways to expand it or extend how it's used, either by area or by project or by timeframe. But up and above that, and above even some of the things that Mr. Cunningham mentioned, we worked on a bill last year called Urban Growth Districts that allows sales tax capture from a certain area to fund infrastructure improvements. I'd be interested in that again. He mentioned the Community Improvement District that was around last year. That was a helpful conversation to be on, and I think we should engage in again this year. And one that's been around before that was similar to something he mentioned, sales-tax anticipated revenue bonds, star bonds, are something that can effectively initiate some of this growth as well. So I think this is worded a bit passively for my taste, and it says, support if introduced, but I'm comfortable that what it means is that we're going to engage as a city in all these bills that we expect to be introduced, and have the option to support many of them and be in that conversation as they progress as a vehicle to hopefully get some of these things accomplished. And in my mind, when we talk about prioritizing the 1015 we're talking about here, this one should certainly be one of the ones at the top of the list.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Yes, I will support this, but I want to make sure that we keep our emphasis on the redevelopment part. There's development versus redevelopment, and what we don't need to do is to have the inner core of the city die. And so I'm supporting it because it's a plethora of tools that we can use, but I'm hoping that Mr. Cunningham and the administration will keep the main emphasis on redevelopment, which is the most important thing right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. No further lights, roll call.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number fifty-six. Resolution that the legislative package shall include a proposal to amend existing statutes to prevent cities of the metropolitan class to collect assessments, liens after tax certificate foreclosure. claims after tax certificate foreclosure.
Public hearing on item number 56 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan. Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number 57, resolution of the legislative package shall include a proposal to create a criminal surcharge penalty for certain crimes to help fund law enforcement.
Public hearing on item number 57 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents?
Good afternoon, Council President and Council members. My name is Reverend Howard Dotson. I'm at 610 South 32nd Avenue. I stand before you opposed to this resolution because last unicameral Senator Brenda Council was one of the only senators to vote against LB 510, which is crime victims' reparation. And Senator Perce introduced that bill because in 2002, the funding to crime victims' reparation was cut dramatically to only $110,000. The state of Iowa, crime victims have $5 million, and it's only been a few months since LB 510 was passed to enable the crime victims' reparations to be refunded. Right now, for a homicide victim's family, and that's where I come from as an urban pastor, is we're first responders after a homicide. And when I have someone in crisis and they need mental health, I haven't been able to send them to a psychiatrist because right now the Crime Victims Fund only reimburses for the immediate victim. A dead person doesn't need therapy. The family does. So this resolution kind of runs counter to the means that the unicameral judiciary has for legislation in order to get the crime victims' funding back up to par. That's why I stand opposed to this, and I'm hoping that if this does pass, that in terms of funding law enforcement, that it's not just suppression, but it's also prevention. Because when we tack on these things to criminal charges, judges get their pension fund from these charges put on criminal offenses, and so we had a hard time even getting the crime victim reparations because we're running up against judicial retirement pieces that go onto that. So that's why I'm concerned. As a crime victims' advocate, I want to make sure that we don't tack something else that makes it harder for us to have that restorative justice for the crime victims.
Thank you. Any other opponents? See, now the public hearing's closed. Mr. Gray?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this point in time, I wouldn't -- I'm not going to support this only because I have concerns about the poor people's ability to -- who are already strapped to a certain extent, being able to pay this, pay this additional surcharge. I recognize the importance of it, however, and if there is, if included in this language some sort of way, we can include some method so that it is not -- it doesn't unduly affect people without means, then I would be more supportive of it. But right now, just the way it exists right now, unless there's that, some sort of mechanism in place for that, I would not be supporting it at this point, although I do understand the necessity, and I do understand the need for it.
Thank you. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, I support this. I don't know that, in listening to Reverend Dotson, that he really understood the purpose of this. Other states like Iowa have this surcharge. This allows the imposition of up to a certain percentage extra in costs assessed to the criminal defendant who's been convicted to help pay, as this would be introduced. One, the hard costs that the city has that does not ever get recaptured for equipment, personnel, overtime, things like that. The other part that is the innovative approach to this would be a portion of the money that the cities would be eligible for would help reimburse entities like the City of Omaha for jail reimbursement. You know, the cities, the counties house prisoners for the state, and on behalf of the state, and the state by statute is supposed to be reimbursing us, but the fund that's available to do that usually expires very early in the year, and in some cases, it expires in January, so the cities and the counties are left really bearing this burden of picking up all the costs. If this were to pass, the state would have its share of the, up to 35 percent, the cities and counties would have their share, and one part of the share would go for recapturing our hard costs to alleviate the burden on the taxpayers. The other cost would go to help alleviate the costs we incur to house prisoners while awaiting sentencing, while awaiting trial, while awaiting arraignment, while awaiting transfer to the state penitentiary system. And so that has very beneficial components to it, and that's why I support it. The other reason why I support it is that we received assurances from Deputy Chief Baker that this would be modeled after places like Iowa to have a means test, so that if you did have an indigent defendant, there wouldn't be this imposition of the surcharge if there was really no practical way for the person to pay, as well as provisions that would protect the person from having to sit out the time in jail in order to cover the surcharge. So with those assurances from Deputy Chief Baker, I'm comfortable supporting this, and if there hasn't been a motion, I would make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
If I wasn't sure that those were assurances, and if those were assurances, then I would second it, because that was my concern. And if he's assured, I thought they weren't talking about -- I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Mr. Gray?
Mr. Stothard, you can go ahead. You had the light on. I just, I didn't hear it that way, so I -- okay, if you don't mind, I mean, I would -- just for the record, I would be supportive of it if those were assurances. I didn't recognize those. I thought he was saying that they could model it after the Iowa piece. I didn't know that they would. If the answer is they would, then I would be supportive.
This morning at the pre-meeting, I think that's what I heard him say.
Yeah, that's why I wanted him to be here, so I'd make sure that's what he said, so I -- I could tend to be a supporter if that's the case. Jack?
Jack Chalhoub, City Lobbyist. Yes, at the pre-council meeting this morning, Deputy Chief Baker was in attendance, and although we don't have our final draft back from the Law Department, he's modeling this proposal on Iowa law, which does have a means test within it, and therefore it would meet your requirement at least, Councilmember Gray. However, if I may, I wanted to add one other point that Marty Conboy mentioned this morning, and I think it was echoed by Paul Kratz, our city attorney, is in our constitution now, there are some guidelines relative to fines, fees, penalties, et cetera, and where those funds can be allocated. With that, they're dedicated to the funding of the common schools within the locale in which the crime occurred, and so we may run into some problems on this bill anyway. It'll be closely watched by not only the courts, who are going to be mindful of the cost, because due to the budget cuts on the state level, there's talk already in the courts that they may have to add and raise their filing and surcharge fees to fund themselves. So I just wanted you to have all the facts here before you made your final vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Stothard?
Well, Councilman Jerem stated what I was going to say, and I think you -- your presentation of the facts were right on, and thank you, Jack. I just wanted to ask Reverend Dotson again, after, if you'd come forward and identify yourself again.
Reverend Dotson, 610 South 32nd Avenue.
Now, after you've heard this conversation about what this really does mean, are you more comfortable with this now?
Well, I think he spoke to my concern that that's what's playing out at the state level, is that it's kind of, that pie can only be divided so many ways, and if you start dividing it, it's only going to mean that we go back to where crime victims' reparations based on Senator Perce's bill, LB 510, that the judges and the pensions and other court filing fees, they're going to be, you're going to be going upstream and in some ways running counter to crime victims' concerns because there's only so much you can divide.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Jerem?
Yeah, I don't mean to sound like I have the answers here, but let's keep in mind what this is. It calls for the imposition of a surcharge that does not now exist, that would be added on to the fines. Therefore, it would be new money, in the fee form, to cover hard costs, so I don't have the same fears with regard to dividing up the pie of money, because this is additional funds.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan. Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item 58, resolution of the legislative package shall include support for legislation if introduced to allow cities to increase their local option sales tax by one half percent with an affirmative vote of the citizens in order to sunset the restaurant occupation tax.
Public hearing on item number 58 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Thompson?
Yes, I'm going to go ahead and support this because it has two things that I like. First of all, it says that the citizens get to vote on it. I think some of you know I'm a proponent of that kind of thought. But also, it says that it would sunset the restaurant tax, which I think right now is causing havoc in the city. So even though I am a conservative, I think I'm trying to look at the worst of evils, and I think this is a better alternative than what we have right now, and it's also one in which the people would have a say on it. So I'm going to go for that because that's the right thing to do. Thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Stothard?
Thank you, and, you know, I would support some comprehensive tax reform. There's no doubt about that, and I do think that we need to look into these, many of the sales tax exemptions that we have. But again, we have a session coming up, and we have one lobbyist that has a lot of work to do, and I want to make sure that we send him in the direction that he's going to be the most effective, that he's going to be able to get some of these things accomplished for us. And right now, with the state looking at a $1.4 billion gap this year, and a governor that is saying that they're going to take care of that gap without a tax increase, I kind of, I truly feel like that this is not the time that they're going to be willing to take up the ability to raise the sales tax. So with that in mind, and for those reasons, I'm not going to support this at this time.
Thank you. Roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan. Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted on a five to two vote. Item 59, resolution of the legislative package shall include support for legislation if introduced to reduce or eliminate certain sales tax exemptions.
Public hearing on item number 59 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan. Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number 60, resolution that presented to the recommendation of the Law Committee, the city lobbyist, Jack Chalhoub, is hereby designated as the official lobbyist of the City of Omaha and citizens before the legislature, legislative committees, and individual senators.
Public hearing on item number 60 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Jack Chalhoub, City Lobbyist. I want to thank the council for putting this resolution up for a public vote today. Typically, we do this every year, and it almost becomes a matter of perfunctory work, if you will, but I've had on occasions in my 16 years of representing Omaha where senators have asked me for my credentials, they've asked me for, you know, who authorized me to be in Lincoln on behalf of the City of Omaha. So this piece of paper does mean something. It is important. Additionally, I've been asked even before for my job description, so I wanted to let you know that I appreciate you giving me the authority to act on your behalf and behalf of the mayor, so thank you.
You've got somebody else.
Any other proponents?
Reverend Dotson, 610 South 32nd Avenue. I want to support this recommendation, and I hope to get your phone number, because we're facing something as a state and as a nation. We have 21 states where legislatures are trying to replicate what's happening in Arizona right now, and in January, judiciary is going to be having Senator Jensen's bill, which is essentially an unfunded mandate for Omaha Police Department. And Deputy Chief Baker did an excellent job last year when he spoke before judiciary about LB 699, which Senator McCoy introduced, and we know that Senator Jensen's going to introduce Arizona, copycat, and 20 other states are going to be going through this. As an urban pastor, it's critical that we have the Omaha Police Department brass and your lobbyists at judiciary. Senator Council and Senator Ashford have assured me and others that this bill will not make it out of committee, but I know just having it on the table is going to increase crime in my neighborhood. The relationship between your police department and the Latino community has already been compromised, and as we get closer to January, MS 13 and 18th Street are going to see a green light in my neighborhood. So I'm grateful that you have a lobbyist that can also be there in January along with, I hope Chief Hayes is there. The implications are huge, and South Omaha has been relatively quiet, but the gang unit is concerned and rightfully so. And when you have laws like this and you compromise community policing, crime goes up. So I'm grateful that you have a lobbyist in Lincoln.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Thompson?
Yes, just a quick comment, Jack, if you don't mind coming back up.
Yes, sir. Jack Chalhoub, City Lobbyist.
People who might be watching via television will say, "Well, how in the world are we going to get all of this passed in this session?" So just for, under better, greater understanding, some of these are going to have to be prioritized, right? Some are going to have to be more important than others. Is that correct?
Absolutely, Councilmember. Thank you for asking that. Some of them will be, if you will, prioritized by the 49 members of the legislature. They're each allowed to pick one. Additionally, the committees are allowed to select two priority bills, and so with that, I need to know from the council what your priorities are as well, and that way we can work to see that they become priorities down in Lincoln.
So even though we've passed a host of them, some of them will have to be at the bottom of the list compared to others?
Possibly, yes.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make that clear so that people wouldn't understand that we're going to go down and try to get 35 things done.
Thank you.
Thank you. When, during this 90-day session?
Correct, 90 days.
Will we be required to start setting those priorities? Basically, is that towards the end, within maybe a 30-day stretch, or?
Frankly, what we've adopted today, it looks like we've adopted two bills to introduce, and then a host of bills to support if somebody else introduces them. So in a sense, we've prioritized them by saying, "Which ones do we carry forward?" And in the meantime, out of the, you know, the ones that we really have a large category on are support if otherwise introduced, those are ones that we have to be mindful of, and I need to know your feedback. I think, you know, we can surmise when three of the council members all ask for the same resolution, we resolution regarding CAR reform, that that's probably going to be a very important item.
So when does, when does the legislature sort of make that decision?
Okay.
When they have to prioritize within their, that 90-day timeframe?
Right. Typically, they will, they start session January 5th, and once every bill has had its public hearing, by rules set by the Speaker of the Legislature, he'll inform the members that they have to designate their personal priority, and the committees will have to designate their priorities. In a 90-day session, that would probably happen roughly about the mid to late March period. And so that's really when we're going to know what the major issues are. We already know that the state's budget will be a major issue. That's why we have 30 extra working days, so.
Okay. Just wanted the public to know that for those that are viewing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further lights? Roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan. Mr. President?
Yes.
Pursuant City Council Rule 7H, the third reading of public hearing, gen. item 61 through 62, shall be held on December 7th. Pursuant City Council Rule 7H, the second reading of public hearing, gen. item 63, shall be held on November 23rd.
Roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan. Mr. President?
Thanks, everyone.